I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a review and justice for all.
If we could have roll call.
Yes.
Rosa.
Yes.
Cora.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
White.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Yeah.
Here. Okay, at this time, we will open it up for any limited public comment. We'll open that at 7:01. I think we're gonna close it at about 7:01 and a half. Okay, um, Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda unless there's any discussion as to items on the agenda. We don't have agendas for... We'll pass this down. There's not really much of an agenda because it's just master plan work. Let's let someone read it and then we'll get a support. Did you put an agenda in your mind?
I can just read it. A is limited, limited public comment. B, approval of agenda. Three. C is inquiry as to conflicts of interest. D, correspondence. E, new business. One, master plan narrative review. Two, future land use map review. Three, overview of the five-year park senior agenda.
Did you play it back? We have a motion on the table if anyone would like to support that. We have support from... If there's no discussion, we'll call for all in favor of the approval agenda as presented. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing. I seem to not have my agenda now, so we're inquiring as to conflicts of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest on any agenda item today? Seeing none. We have no correspondence, I believe, as of now for today, so we'll move right into new business, which is the bulk of this meeting and the reason we're here for this special meeting is the master plan. So Mr. Arcandelli is going to take it away.
We could have a very short meeting. All you have to do is prove an doubt and move it on. I sent out a draft on... We sent a draft out on Friday, one with and one without graphics because of the size, and then we... They were posted on the project board site along with the current copy of the draft, Parks and Recreation Plan. Wanted to make sure the planning commission had a copy of that to take a look at it. Where we're at on the master plan, what you have in the narrative, which is noted on the bottom as Draft 930, 2013, is takes the planning commission all the way up to the future land use map, which is an agenda item that I wanted to talk to you about before we actually spend time on revising. The way the master plan narrative is set up, I'm kinda glad that Nikki made copies of the parks plan because what we did is we intentionally just gave you the narrative part and we attached the graphics. We didn't want to go through the actual preparation of the document. The master plan will look very similar to this, but this is more of an intense graphic program and it's even a little bit bulkier to send over to email, so I wanted to... I really wanted you to read the narrative. The narrative includes... It's... And the other part of this that I'm trying to do is, as I kicked off this process about six months ago, I think the master plan needs to be a document that somebody can pick up and read within about a half an hour, forty minutes at the most. And it should clearly articulate where the township wants to go relative to its principles and framework. Have the ma... Have the future land use map and have action and implementation. I don't like overwhelming the master plan with a lot of data and information that just makes it bulkier to review. We can provide all that as an appendices and put that on the project website, okay? So there's like reams of statistical data that sometimes you find in a master plan that, you know, I prefer summarizing it in a dashboard that you've already received. We've talked about, in the plan, we summarized the data for you, the information from the census, and then we've also incorporated in here the cornerstones that the planning commission has reviewed twice and commented on, and they're included in here as well now. And then there's a section in the plan that talks about, it's a section, we term, community assets worth enhancing, which are some of the key things that really I wanted to talk to you tonight that should be incorporated into the master plan in terms of where the community wants to go in the future. And then, I'd like to review those with you, and then I'd like to open it up for discussion with the planning commission. The... If you turn to page 21 of the document, this is the section that starts after the cornerstones, which you've already reviewed prior previously. We've got a few things in here that we wanted to talk, we wanted to kind of shine a light on relative to their incorporation of the master plan. We refer to those as community assets worth enhancing. The first one is the park system along US 31 in terms of, we think that because of the expenditure that's been made by all of the parks involved and the fact that there's been planning going on with the Parks Advisory Committee, is that the park system should appear fairly prominent in the new lanes, in the new master plan as a community asset because of the ability not only to provide recreation services to the community, but the opportunity that it provides to the business district and the potential for economic development, okay, in the community. Those are all noted. The Mickey and all, and it's consistent, and they're outlined in the placemaking study, plus the Parks Advisory Board has undergone some additional master planning for the parks, and it's incorporated in the five-year recreation plan. The second one, which I think is very important, and actually kind of almost a... The Achilles' heel of the township is public water. Unless there's a reliable source of potable water, which is public water, that's provided to the commercial areas in the community, especially along the 72 and the US 31 corridor, we're not gonna be able to... We're not gonna... The township is not going to see any large commercial growth whatsoever. And I'm not talking larger than the pick boxes, I'm talking about retail growth as big as the Goodwill. Because Goodwill was... Mesa really had to look at coding their codes in order to allow it, and the word that we got back was, this is gonna be kind of the last one that goes through that type of an analysis. We really need... Mesa is part of the master plan, part of the regional meeting with all of the agencies. They were the first ones to get up and voice their recommendations for the master plan. They said that the township needs to have a reliable source of water in order to meet the current fire codes for sprinklers, having the commercial facilities with adequate sprinkler systems. Otherwise, they're gonna... The buildings, the property owners are going to have to do what like the Holiday Inn Express has where one part of the building, two or three stories tall, is actually a large system that is there to fight fires and with, to meet the sprinkler requirements, which is very costly to those businesses and property owners. So, we noted in here that the Traverse City Town Center has an agreement with the tribe in order to provide water and kind of suggesting that because of this arrangement, maybe the township needs to pursue that act, that action as well, and have a similar situation where they have the tribe potentially provide water to the business district so the township doesn't get into the operation and maintenance and management of the water system. Third one that we think that's important is connecting the Grand Traverse Town Center with Acme Village, and that would connect both pieces of property, the properties, so there would be a connection with Mount Hope with the GTTC property. That was advanced in the placemaking plan. The planning commission is part of a special use approval for the village of Grand Traverse, now known as GTTC, actually has, and the developers have provided it, executed cross-access easements to allow that connections to occur. With that connection in place in the future, that would basically set up a county arterial or collector within, between the properties. It would take some of the traffic off of 72 and provide better, easy access between all of these developments and these neighborhoods, so we think that's important. The other part of this is, the fourth one down, is public facilities. We know that in discussions with the township administration, that Mesa is looking at alternative sites for a new fire department, and obviously, if anybody really has worked here in this building, there's a need to have a new township hall that has offices that can provide modern office space to township administrative staff, facilities, conference rooms that are somewhat private because there's really nothing in this building where you can have a private conversation, and just have better meeting facilities to accommodate the requirements for public meetings, okay, in case you want to televise the meetings in the future, et cetera. So, we think that there's maybe an opportunity for new public facilities. Next one in the list on page 22 is agricultural preservation and expansion, and this gets at the area of the use of the PDR program, which has been pretty successful based on meetings that we've had with the farming and the agricultural community. We know that PDR eligibility actually exceeds the amount of funding available, so people are interested in the PDRs, there's just not enough funds coming in. So, that should be continued in the future. And then, we also mentioned that the township has adopted ag tourism ordinance, but there's some other outcomes that are needed relative to ag-related businesses, and that's part of the conversation that's being held with an ag committee that's working on taking a look at possible zoning revisions. So we think that's worth pursuing as part of the master plan. Next is, and last one, is the utilization of form-based code. The... This is gonna be, you guys got a copy of it. It was supposed to be routed to the zoning committee for their review, but Nikki had also sent you guys a copy of the form-based code, so I don't know if you opened that up and took a look at it, but they've been working on it now for about four months, and this would go in place of some of the business districts. And it really sets up the opportunities to have a lot of the subdivisions and the retail areas connected. It creates public space standards for sidewalks and walkability, and it actually provides some... It also provides benefit to the commercial uses because it allows businesses to share parking and it reduces the ratio of parking per square foot to more modern standards. So, it would be the use of utilization of form-based codes. The last part of this, which is, we wanted to put a blurb in here because it's consistent with some of the regional thinking, is that the township has been designated as a growth and investment area out of the grand vision, and there's only, there's about four of them that have been identified in the region, and this area is one of them. And we really think that the township needs to leverage that designation relative to how it's gonna grow in a very compact manner, and that's kind of in the future land use plan, areas that are designated as town center and as adjacent urban, urban residential neighborhoods where they would be compact, they would be in the southern part of the township, and they would have, in the future, they would have access to utilities. All that has sanitary now, in the future, these areas would have opportunities for public water. And without a combination of sewer and water within these defined areas, you're really not going to have the investment that's been identified for this part of the county. So that's a need. Without it, it's gonna inhibit it, it's gonna prohibit the investment. So those are some of the key areas that you haven't seen. You worked on the cornerstone, and then the front part is the existing assessment of businesses and demographics and housing stock and all those issues. What will be coming out of our discussion this evening is a modified future land use map, the zone plan, the action strategy that we put together for the Parks and Rec plan that Marcy and her group saw last week. So with that, I'll open it up for Madam Chairman for questions.
I will do the same thing. Anybody voluntary question?
Um, tell me about cornerstones.
Do you have page under?
Oh, I'm sorry. It did start on page 15. I'm commenting on it more or less 16 or beyond. It's the general use of the... Use of itemizing without a leading to the itemization, and I'm just wondering. So you have the cornerstones, and then it just starts saying, one, two, three, four, five, starts bulletising items.
Yeah.
Is there something that is to lead the reader into what those are?
Yeah, it's gonna be, they'll be... It's a part of the graphics, they'll be, that's the building blocks. So they'll be at this... Yeah, they're gonna have, the cornerstone is the... Is the large, is the paragraph narrative in the itemizer, the building blocks that attach the...
Okay.
And I... So in the graphic report, you'll see the building blocks show up.
Okay.
I have a question, kind of along the same lines. Is, I live here, and sometimes I was getting bogged down by the abbreviations and remember, because they're all so similar. They all are like GT something, something, something.
I know, I know, I know. You gotta know GT's here.
So, I mean, is it really gonna be the end of the world? And it's not consistent. Sometimes they're abbreviated and sometimes they're not, so...
You want them all open?
I kind of, but I would be open to other people's... How much longer is it really gonna take?
Not much.
And it just makes it so much easier to pay attention to, I think. Because I was like, there's one spot I get really confused. It's like talking about the GTTC. It's in that section we were just in. On the second paragraph of page 21, it's talking about Grand Traverse Town Center, and then it says, can provide the downtown, and then it has town center in parentheses that was envisioned in the previous master plan. So is that Acme Village, the town center is actually, or the town centers?
The town center is that light blue on the future land use map right there. Right here.
Okay.
This is the town center destination right here.
Okay. Well, I... I mean, I was still confused, I'm just saying.
Okay, I'll open them up.
Clarity would help me. And we even have things that change names.
Yeah, like AGT.
GT is GTTC. So I guess it's...
Any other comments on this?
I just want to make sure in the park section that the park plan will be updated in the next...
It will be. Whatever's gonna be in the park plan will get integrated into this one.
Is that the action item that you gave?
No, that's the...
No, it's the actual, it's the master plan. Anyone else have thoughts, concerns?
Do you guys agree with the community assets that are worth leveraging that I talked about, public facilities needing for public water, you know, full value, leveraging your park system, those type of things that we, that I talked about? Because those are... Master plans today are less about land use allocation, they're more about specific community strategies. And who's going to Citizen Planner? Okay, John, you're going, and Beth, are you going?
Not this round.
Not this round, okay. Because in Citizen Planner, they're probably gonna talk about master plans relative to state statute in terms of all the various components, and land use is a big component of that. But a lot of that's changing also because a lot of communities are built out, and land use is less of a concern, it's redevelopment and development areas are more of a concern, and that's where, how master plans, some master plans move in that direction. I think here, actually, when I talk to you about your future land use map, I'm recommending, not recommending many changes to it, because everything is highly balanced between the future land use map and your PDR eligibility map, which is this one here, that if I make many changes on that, it's gonna change the PDR eligibility, and I don't want to do that. But, it's really less about land use allocation, it's more about some strategic issues that the community needs to take a look at in the future, and that kind of came out of the survey that we did. And have, it's gonna, it's gonna be apparent once, once the Meyer project starts implementation, and there are other retailers and businesses that want to locate in the community as part of that project, okay, then that's where the utilities, the public utilities are gonna start kicking in. So, you know, there's a few things that I think that the township needs to position itself for in the next few years in order to really capitalize on that momentum. The other part of it is, is the utilities should be within a defined area, and the defined area would be in this part of the township right here, where you have the public water, okay? That area in here then becomes your growth, your growth and investment strategy, because that can accommodate the commercial and the office development and residential development. You can't have compact, higher-density housing without having access to public water, okay, to a degree. Because again, you start building multiple family, the fire department's gonna start wanting integration firefighting technology, like sprinklers and whatnot, standpipes and things along those lines that would be costly to do without a public water system. Some of the residential culture are gonna change too, and some houses are gonna require sprinklers.
Wow.
Some of the larger homes are gonna require sprinkler systems.
Ooh. Um, I have a question about the... What are we calling it? The assets?
The what?
The community assets worth enhancing that we went over. I feel like the road issue came up a lot in the survey, both in the comments and in the rating.
The connectivity of the road, or the quality?
The actual quality of the road, which I... It's my understanding that we have very little capacity as a township to do much about that. Am I mistaken? It's largely handled by the county and the state?
Most of the, most of the roads in the residential areas are, they're not private, they're considered county roads.
Okay. I just wondered, because it did come up a lot, if it should be addressed here somehow, even if it's in something more of like an overall infrastructure. You know, we're talking about creating pedestrian traffic, but I would argue that while we do that, we would improve roads, so it might not be super hard to put it in.
No, it's not hard at all.
I second that.
Even with the... This coming from someone who lives in Holiday. But I just feel like that's something we heard a lot, and I'm trying to remember back of other things that, other issues, not things, other issues that people express concern about repeatedly, and that was the one that I remember coming up.
You know, you touched on it a little bit on page 16, but no, at the very top.
16?
That's about completing.
Right, the paser and all that.
Right.
Right, but then, so these are the, okay, I guess I might be a little confused on structure then.
No, you're, the cornerstone is, there's a cornerstone that focuses on infrastructure improvement. One of those is storm, water, sewer, and roads, like school said. But if, if, I don't have a problem putting it in under community assets worth enhancing because they are community assets, and based on the condition, we know that there, many of them are in disrepair. So, yeah, I don't have a problem adding a paragraph under there. Or if there's anywhere near capital improvements, you listen to their... It'll potential, it'll be in the back part of the action strategy.
So then, can I just ask a question about definition then? So you have the cornerstone. Are the cornerstone... If I was someone who was wondering what was going on in Acme, and I said, how do I find out what Acme's all about? Would I read the cornerstone?
You'd read the whole plan.
But, you're funny.
And a half hour.
Just not take me a half hour to read this, bad boy. Let me tell you that right now. So the assets, just define for me what the cornerstone's intent is and what the assets need to be.
The cornerstones are much like goals and objectives.
Okay.
Okay? The assets worth improving are kind of kicking it up a notch, saying that of all the stuff that we've talked about, here's something like a half a dozen really key things that we really need to focus our attention on in the future, the next five years or so, okay? So, I mean, you know, a master plan is supposed to be a document that looks out 20 years and you update it every five. There's some things in here that you need to resolve right away.
Okay.
And really focus your attention on. Now, I changed the title because typically, when we started out, community assets worth enhancing was actually called issues worth resolving, okay? Yeah. And I don't know if you want to go back to that, but I put community assets, you know, I looked at it and said, you know, these are community assets that are worth really enhancing and making better.
Well, some of them we don't even have yet.
Well, you have, in some degree, you do. I mean, you have the township hall, and you have the fire department.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have connectivity with two things, one of which is, really there's nothing going on at it.
These two? But you...
And then...
These are right here, Acme Village and the Grand Traverse Town Center are assets that you have. Now, they're not fully developed, but they are assets because they have vested development rights.
Okay. All right, touche.
I don't know, I think we should maybe talk about going back to the other, I mean, it's slanted kind of negatively, but it's more accurate, the title.
What, issues worth resolving?
Mm-hmm.
You could do it either way. I looked at it and I thought, you know, I just kind of, those are issues, but on the other hand, agriculture is not an issue, it's an asset that needs to be sustained and enhanced, okay? There are some communities that definitely have issues, but here you got, like the parks are really an asset, ag's an asset. You've got assets here that you just, you need to better maximize, or maintain, you know? Like ag, you want to make, you know, everybody wants to maintain the agricultural quality of the community.
Well, maybe it's two sections then. Maybe it's one thing that needs to be improved and one thing that's more about assets.
I think it all goes together. If we call them something that needs to be improved, you're automatically gonna turn people off and think we're gonna like raise their taxes and make a millage, but if we just call them assets that we're enhancing, we're just looking at ways to come up with, you know, better solutions to what already exists.
Sort of, well, I'd smoke.
Well, the...
How about just community enhancements? You don't have to specifically say they're assets.
Right, that's almost misleading, that word.
What's assets?
Yeah.
Actually, not, because under the...
But to align them at a good point.
The assets makes me think of when we go through and we identify what's great about our township.
Right.
You know, like the exercise we did where we put all the stacks on the map.
Correct, but, okay, I mean, I look at assets, community assets, as being on a balance sheet. The community's got, you have a road system which is an asset, it's just not in good shape, okay? You have parks which are an asset that need to be improved, you have agricultural properties that are an asset that need to be sustained and enhanced with other regulations by allowing, you know, some other things to handle. So I look at assets more or less on, as a, as part of a community balance sheet, okay? Now, the federal accounting system requires that if you're... Now, the federal accounting system requires that in your audits, that a community now has to inventory and estimate what its asset value is. And the asset value is just not cash. They require asset value for all the buildings, all, all roads that are owned by a government that's parks system. They want to see really what the true asset value of the community is. So, I mean, it's just, it's like your house. When you do a balance sheet for your home, for your own home income, you take the asset value of what you have in, in cash, stocks, whatever dividends, that type of thing. But you also look at what the asset value is of the property that comes into play, and that's kind of what this is. This is, these are community assets. I'm not adverse, it's really a planning commission decision. Planning commission wants to turn the title that differently. I just want to give you what, you know, what my, my take is on it. And if you want to change it, that's fine.
Um, I just wouldn't call utilization of form-based codes, utilization of form-based codes then, because that's not really identifying what community asset it is. I would say like improvement or revitalization of the commercial district. And then in the paragraph state that form-based code is going to be the action item that gets that done.
Sure.
Ha ha! I don't know. Things just roll off my tongue and I can't remember them.
Revitalization of the business.
There you go. Thank you. Assuming it was one of the finals. That is. Anybody else? Any thoughts on different titles for that section or?
Well, frankly, I'm happy to put the language away right now. But I do have, I guess, a question under the connector, two and two. And I don't know if it's appropriate or if it's even feasible, but when I look at that route as a connector, I see that as an alternate evacuation route. So if we had a problem on seventy-two, it's an access point to Monson. And it really isn't mentioned here, and maybe it appropriately isn't that since we're crossing that way. But to me, that's what I see when I see that. If we've got a block right down here at seventy-two and thirty-one, we could actually move people from Meyer to Monson without having to cross that intersection. That's worth enhancing.
Could we say something like, instead of assets worth enhancing, could we say something like township assets focus or township asset priorities?
Yeah. I don't know, I guess.
That's a part of it.
I think priorities does exactly what you were saying you'd like it to do. I say of all the things we want to do, these are the half dozen that are key.
Right. You're going to expand or improve on it. It doesn't tell you that part of it, that enhancing does, right?
Right, because ag theoretically-
You want to say, call it like focused priorities? Or township, you want to just say township priorities?
That seems so easy to understand.
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
You're getting nuts. Yep, okay. Township priorities, it is.
So you have your cornerstones and then you have the priorities. That makes a lot of sense. Okay. Good. Anybody else? You have a lot of notes here, Mr. Earl.
Just a few.
Any you'd like to share?
No. No, they're just, they're, they're actually, your notes for further on detail, you know, more of these things.
Okay. All right. So I think it, now we want to go on to talk about the future land use map.
I want to show you what I'm thinking is going to change in the future.
If everyone's prepared for that, we'll go-
I mean, it's not scary.
Wait, before we go, were you, were you looking for some type of action on his, his part?
I was looking for comments, yes. And if anybody's got anything that they want to give me, I'll take it back with me. I mean, Steve, if you want to, you know, if you've got some things that you want, you want to Xerox and give to me or?
Yeah, you can copy what I wrote down, because I won't talk about in the future, like with the water and sewer and the comments on that.
Yeah. I'd like to see your comments on that. Maybe before you leave, we can run a copy, computer copy machine. Okay?
And then as far as this, it's not complete totally. So maybe at the next meeting, we would be seeing something entirely-
We'd be seeing something that looks like this.
Okay. Put together, formatted.
Yes.
Graphics inserted.
Yes, I wanted you to review the narrative.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay.
And then at that time, we would be recommending to the board they put it out for review. Is that correct?
If, if you're comfortable with what you see.
Okay. Just so everyone knows process.
Thanks for asking.
Because I can't even remember it after that.
No, you're right. When the planning commission is comfortable enough that they would like this available for public review, the, the planning commission would not adopt it, they would recommend to the board, trust me, that the board approve it for distribution, which means that the plan would go to all of the adjacent, adjacent communities and it would go to all of the agencies. And then they have sixty-three days to send you comments back. And it's like what we did when Elk Rapids gave us and then the county. So there's a sixty-day, sixty-three day review period. So technically, if you didn't do this until November, the board said, okay, in November, it would be November and December, you wouldn't get any comments back until after the first of the year.
Okay.
And then at that point in time, then you hold the public hearing.
Public hearing, and then we adopt it or we recommend to the board to think about it?
You adopt it, you adopt it unless the board decides to adopt it. But the board has to inform you that they want to basically adopt the plan.
Okay.
And so far, the board has not said that.
Okay.
But the board will have to inform you of that.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, page five, second line.
Sure.
How many others?
Does this beat XXX?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The-
The triple A.
We have to insert that.
Is that page four?
We have to insert these.
Okay.
We have to run the analysis off of them here.
Okay.
There's lots of XXX.
Yeah. We start running those off in the final, for the final draft.
I definitely have one last question about turning in the plan and the review process. This, if we get our review process done for the park plan first, do we have to wait to turn our plan until it's adopted along with?
Yeah, they're different. They're different than the review process.
Okay.
Okay, future land use map, here's the, here's the, this is the, this is the PDR map, okay? It shows the, the properties that were approved for purchase and ones that are, have been offered for preservation. So then these are the, this is the PDR map that was prepared by the conservancy for construction of the township. And then you see the dash line is the, what's referred to as the agricultural preservation zone. That dash line then migrated right over here into this map because in order for, for state funding, and when the Department of Ag was giving out grants for the PDR program, there was an application that had to be submitted and the state wanted to make sure that the PDR, the PDR, the eligibility areas were on the future land use map so they could see that areas that were, they were, they would give money to buy the purchase of development rights were in effect, areas that would be able to accommodate agricultural, or had agricultural property, okay? So you don't see PDRs down here or up here. When you read the land use code for, description for rural residential, part of it is, these are areas that have large lot residential, but that are also used for agricultural farms and orchards. So that's why you have the PDR program. These properties within these dashed areas are eligible for PDR purchase of development right from, okay? And they see that, how the farms, the ones that are listed, fall within that zone. Now, one of the recommendations I, I wanted to make to the planning commission was that you've got an area in here that is a big block of PDR eligibility, which is right here. And according to this map, this is either, these are areas that were subject to properties that had been offered for PBR, which are, which are agricultural, which are orchards and ag property now. I was suggesting, my suggestion, is that the ag, that we, we show these properties in here as agricultural instead of as rural residential. And I was also recommending that these areas, these fingers that are appearing here, that these areas eventually become urban, urban residential and fill in this, this green area, this area and this area as, as urban residential. Because these will eventually be areas that have, are subject to water and sewer, they already have sewer, but they have water. And it doesn't make sense that you have urban residential and then in the middle you have a rural residential in the future. This is a future land use map that, this would be your urban residential areas and then these would be your pockets of ag. So my proposal is that ag would show up in this, this area right here, which is consistent with the PBR map in terms of the property owners that want to avail themselves of the PBR program in order to sustain that. So, I mean, that's, and I don't, that's why I said I don't want to mess around with this line, because this line was, this took about, I don't know, Doug, are you involved in this? I think one of the narratives I saw, this took like nine months to-
It took close to a year.
Close to a year to get this line. And I don't want to, I don't want to mess with it. I want to, I want to honor the work that went into creating that line. And I just want to bring it over, it's on this map, and then I just want to reinforce it, this, this area right here, which is already orchards. I'd like to show that in here is still being ag and not rural residential, okay? So that's, that's, that's the change. I'm suggesting ag here, and I'm suggesting here, here, and here, we go with urban residential along that, that area, which is Bunker Hill to the south. And that's the only changes on the future land use map. Everything else pretty much stays the same. Just stays the same. The town center includes Acme Village, the Grand Travers Town Center right here, and then includes this sixty-plus acre parcel that is currently owned by Meyer, which was the old Lautner's Common. These, this is already zoned B3 for planned shopping, and you already know that these already have vested development rights for mixed-use development. Where'd you make up the town center? Any discussion on that?
Well, how, will that have any impact on property values in that area? Up or down or?
It shouldn't because the, the, the rural, the rural ag description in the, in the future land use says it's an area that is, could either be agricultural or residential, large lot residential. The only reason why Dan, I was looking at it was because those are, those parcels there are, is an indication, I think, is, is some of it Saylor's property?
Which one?
And here, Doug? John? Is this some of John's property in here?
That's John, Paul's.
Paul's. And he's expressed an interest in the PBR program, so.
Well, it just made sense, especially for the infrastructure standpoint on water, sewer. You know, if you look at, crossing our resort, you know, we have an eight-inch water line went across thirty-one right there at the golf course and then go up or down, and that would be the limit. And then you could loop around back in, down south and around, you have a nice loop system. And the sanitary is all, goes to the south.
And one of the, one of the maps that you don't have here is the sanitary sewer map, which we, we already have in the master plan. We got it from the county TPW. But Steve's right, sanitary system is primarily to the south and along this way. Really, the bulk of it is down in this area and some of it's up over here. Nothing over here, this is still all something. But it kind of then defines, defines that, you know, this area is going to be primarily ag, and then this area down here is primarily more, more developed, the town center, I assume, or residential.
Anybody else? I have, I have a couple of questions. Okay, first of all, with these right here, I'm assuming the reason we left some of these rural residential was because of, I mean, right here you have the Vasa Trailhead. This is, which creek is this? This is the, this is Acme Creek. And so I just be concerned about saying that we see that all as urban residential because I think we want the area surrounding Vasa and that to be like subdivision up to the edge.
Well, Vasa would stay as that dark green.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just-
I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think this, this property right here is sold for development. And so you've got two large pieces here that, and you know, and then the way that the ordinance is set up, you always have the, the riparian buffers along the creek areas. Acme Creek is really this system right here.
Right. What do you think of that?
Uh, I don't, I don't know, I'm handling with the name of that creek, that creek out there. Does anybody know what that creek is down here in the south, southwest portion? I could look it up. But Acme starts, Acme Creek starts here and that way out.
By changing it to urban residential, do we change the density that people can build within that area?
Yeah, we would change the density. It would eventually go up to what you have in your, here's your zoning map. Your zoning map has a lot of this right now, it's also in residential anyway. And it has this area labeled here as forest and coastal district.
Which never makes, makes that sense.
Yeah.
Especially in the coastal district, it's mostly one-family urban residential. Okay, that was my one question. My other question is in this area. I would reconsider the idea of having something as town center, more have like a mixed-use area and include some of this commercial. If we're looking at doing the form-based code, we're seeing it's one of our, whatever we decided action items or whatever. I, I would think in here, you know, maybe, maybe not this little recreational rebridge and all those, but the commercial, and we're talking about extending the form-based code here and along this corridor, to me, that would be like a mixed-use district instead of a town center, having a town center be just two parcels. Because theoretically, the town center is going to play in with a park across the road and, and all of that. I, I think we're identifying more in what we're doing than just those two parcels as what our town center should be.
Let me think about that.
It's funny. I just wouldn't bring it up.
No, I, I, well, like, we should talk about it tonight.
Like right now?
Yes, like right now.
Okay. Any thoughts? Trey, you sit on the zoning subcommittee with me. What would your thoughts be on that?
So you're talking about-
Not to put you on the spot.
No. I was having a thought of, um-
Following me?
Following me, you're going back.
So these, this blue area right now, this is two parcels. This is Acme Village and then this is, oh, it's more than two parcels, it's three. This is the GTTC and then this is, what do they call it, Lautner Crossing?
It's Meyer, Meyer owns it.
Meyer owned it. This is where the Meyer is originally slated to go in. So in our last master plan, we identified this as like the town center.
Right.
But what we're doing right now, we're including these red areas, which is that commercial corridor and then the stuff across the water. And we talked about going all the way up to include the Toms and the Kmart and the, what's Dan Kelly's place, the Williamsburg Dinner Theater, all of that in this, this form-based code district with the different densities. So to call one of them, this is residential, this is town center, I think it's all part So to call one of them, this is residential, this is town center, I think it's all part of a greater thing that we're trying to create, which is a mixed-use district, where you have commercial, residential business all in one area.
One area, right.
Because- This is going to be, I mean, if it built out, I envision a mall as our town center. I envision something down here, close to the water, where the commercial is and that high-density form-based code is being a town center, but that's all part of a mixed-use district.
I'm trying to get to the master plan narrative, the master plan.
Does that make four cents? I like the mixed-use district.
I do, too. It seems to be more, being more accurate.
I, I completely agree with making the different maps complement one another. That's just good logic.
Is that not include then the shore, the shoreline part?
I don't know if it would or wouldn't. I put that's all in form-based code.
Yeah, the, the, the narrative on the town center in the master plan is, the objective, starts right out, the objective of the mixed-use town center-
There you go.
-is to build a network of shops as well as service civic cultural facilities and residential neighborhoods in a concentrated area that is user-friendly to the township resident, the general consumer and the visitor alike. So the town center narrative in the master plan is already mixed-use. Then what you'd be doing in zoning is you'd be creating your, whatever we call that, form-based code district, that waterfront or the Acme Business Form-Based Code. That's your implementation tool. Okay? The, but, you know, if you guys want to change the title from town center to mixed-use, I think the reason why they, they put it in the master plan, the future land use map, is it was a, it was a key component in the, in the master plan of creating a town center versus, they, whenever the discussion, they always refer to it as net-neutral build-out, that they said the town center would have the same amount of commercial development as if you spread commercial development in a, kind of like a sprawl fashion along seventy-two and thirty-one. It was like, take all the commercial development that you can normally see along these major arterials, combine it, and then put it in the town center, and we'd have this compact mixed-use area. So, just giving you some history of why it was referred to as a town center. And I think it's kind of so much ingrained in the master plan that when the name of the village at Grand Travers was changed, they referred to it as the Grand Travers Town Center because it's consistent with the narrative that's in the master plan. So I just give you the history of it.
Right.
Just so you have the-
Thank you.
Question?
Curly?
Yes?
Where do you envision that area ending, let's say, on the south end or the north end? Along, along thirty-one, I presume?
Right.
That's going to be the boundary.
On the south end, I would think it would be-
Bunker Hill Road?
The parts that we're including in the form-based code district. Which you haven't really seen that map if you haven't-
How if they explored it, opened up the document?
Right, if you opened it up, when Nikki sent it out, you would, you would have seen it. So I guess that there's a gap in background between, like, Trey and I and everyone else because we've been working with that for, like you said, I can't believe it's been four months, that's scary, but the last four months. So, in, in the effort to remain consistent throughout multiple documents, I think that we would look at the town center as being more of, they're saying mixed-use, I, I don't, I'm not really worried about language, but, I, I mean, I just don't, I don't know that I'd argue that what the GTTC is going to be right now is one major retailer and some infrastructure. I don't see that as a town center. I see that as a, a develop, development zone, or, I mean, to me, town center is like a little downtown with cute shops and it's got sidewalks. Not everybody drives from a two-county area to come park and load up on diapers.
Well, but I think the, and I agree, you know, but I think where the planning, the previous planning commissions were going is, they wanted to advance the idea of a town center being a very concentrated area in the township that would accommodate commercial office and residential development in a, in a different fashion.
Mixed-use.
Mixed-use, yeah. And that was, that was the goal, that was the, the ninety's map, it's the goal of where you want to go. It doesn't look like enough because you're going to have one ton, a lot of earthwork and infrastructure you won't even see.
Right.
But in the future, it could be bigger.
Correct.
But, I mean, so could, mixed-use, so could right along here, too. And so to me, that's all the same thing, and what we're doing is we're treating that , we look differently and saying we want development here, and the form-based code is the tool to do it, but the form-based code dictates the density, it allows for the higher density, it's market-driven. So, I, I don't know, I just don't, I, I guess I'm, I get what you're saying. I just think town center is, I don't know.
I think the, I think the shoreline district is in itself going to be unique as opposed to the town center designation there. I mean, because it's going to be, it's largely, it's largely parks-
Right.
-on the west side, and then you're going to have an area of, of what you're referring to, which is, you know, the two little shops and whatnot going on. So in itself, I think it's going to be unique. I think its designation is such, means something to people.
This is a whole unique situation here, it's not like a typical town center or a small town like Rapids or something. It's, you have the lakeshore, you have the state highway, federal highway divides everything, and it's a different situation here. And you're going to have different aspects, even if you wanted the shoreline to be a part of a, of a small town center, village center, it's really not going to be, just because of the geography of it, you know, how it's developed over the years. So we've got to kind of work around that sort of.
And then in the context of, if, if the map is a communication tool to the people that we've already gone through this over and over and over with, to change the language on as infrequently as they look at, just because it's more succinct for us, that the implementation tools are still going to be there. To change the language right now, I don't get the value of it. I, I really can see the public perceiving that as a bait and switch. You told us it was going to be one thing, now that you're going out, you're turning it into something else.
I would at least argue that the geography of that zone needs to change a little bit.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that.
Okay.
I think to get at Dan's question, the far south was just beyond, just a little bit south of Bunker Hill, where he had some businesses. And as far north was, was going to include towns and K-marts. That's how far north.
Well, I guess some of the conversation I'm hearing here indicates, I think, is something that Trey said, that, and Steve also, that's that area along there on the east side of thirty-one, it's across from what's the new waterfront area, that could, that could develop into some whole different kind of thing of, you know, maybe, I hate to say it, but, well, I shouldn't hate to say it, but like high-rise condominiums or something like that, and, you know, boutique shopping, and, you know, things that really, where people want access and a view of the bay and all that, you know, and you can have a lot of high density there. I mean, I mean, you could have all that stuff developed down there, it wouldn't be really anything like the town center or some of that area out that way.
Correct.
And just, it's not ready yet, but it could be in ten years.
And that's some of the conversation that the committee's had, because with the, with the change in the landscape along thirty-one with the removal of some of the old mountain pop motels and the mountain jacks, now that those views have been opened up, there's actually a change of, you know, some discussion about changing the land use mix that was in the old Acme Village, which was conceived back in the late nineties as like one-story professional office buildings to actually more higher-density residential to really capture the, the views of the lake now. So there's, you know, the, the market has changed, and you're right, I mean, there's, and then the, the form-based code that the committee's working on allows for a maximum height of three stories on, on the east side of thirty-one. Okay? And what's managing that is the fire department and the-
Scenic Hills.
The height, the height of the-
Scenic Hills.
The scenic hills.
If you have a house in Scenic Hills that looks over the bay, and someone comes and builds a six-story building right in front of you, how are you going to feel? You're going to find me and Trey. Charles, we should have thought about that when we were writing that.
Yeah, so that's, that's how, that's how that was managed. So, yeah, there's, that, you're right, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, you know, the, the character can, could significantly change in the future. The idea, though, is to make everything kind of connected and walkable and make it more like a compact business area, where you have lot and parking lot and curb cut and curb cut and curb cut and curb cut. So it will, it should, it should change.
Yeah. It's just interesting, like, and across the street, I noticed here where the mountain jacks was and everything, that's all designated as green.
Yeah.
You know, which, I, I don't really know that that's, I guess that's right.
Yep.
Because that's the first plan.
That's a part of the plans, yeah.
Yeah. So I reckon on the other side of the road, though, is a part of the commercial stuff. If part of this, is this, when was this done, two thousand and one?
Was it updated in two thousand and nine?
The map was updated then?
Something like, something like Dan Barber was working on it. I think it was two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, that, that the map was updated and included the PBRs on it, so that was updated.
I just wonder, because it looks like it's not done by parcel, it has like, I didn't know if it's in the whole mapping.
It's not done by parcel. You don't want to do it necessarily by parcel, that's why they have the buffers in there to show general, general.
Okay.
It was updated five eighteen, two thousand and nine. Okay? So what are we going to do with town center, just leave the name right now? And then, and the narrative will indicate that it is a mixed-use area?
Yes.
They want to change it, yeah. Okay? Other, other comments on the future land use map, some of the thinking?
Just how often do you look at those again, just like the master plan?
Oh, every five years, you're supposed to say.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just curious, is there actually a title that says that on it?
What's that?
Does it actually say future land use?
The very top.
Right.
I've got it sitting here again.
I know, and look later.
My vertical, it's turned sideways.
It could be bigger and on the top.
It will, will be.
Be done later, too.
We're, we're standardizing all maps into a-
That would be great.
Well, they're going to look like, I don't know if you've got it in there.
I think we had a map.
They're going to look like these type, all your standardized maps, so you'll have a book of maps that all look the same.
So are we still talking about changing those green things, things to mixed-use?
Yeah, I'm, I'm recommending these right here, at least, this one, this one, and part of this one here. This is kind of a woods area back in here, there's a lot of large lot houses back in here, but at least these pods right here, this one, this one, and this one in here.
And are we doing that just for water?
Pardon me?
Or is that just for water and sewer, like?
Because of water and sewer and connectivity and, you know, having a little bit more dense, I mean, basically emulating what's kind of there now. And you're saying on this side of-
I would just say like this first row of parcels here, because if you have development up here, what, what always goes in next to those is condos or-
Go-kick property down there. So, okay, I can take a look at it.
I won't pay. I think we can move into the overview of the five-year parks in that plan, right?
We can.
So we're going to see a future land use map, and you can hash that out if you need to.
Yep, I just wanted to get through-
Any last comments on the future land use?
We make a lot of modifications, so I might involve one of you first.
Okay. Five-year parks in that plan.
You have, this is, this is the copy that, of where we're at today, with the exception the park board last, you gave me last Thursday night?
Yeah.
Park board on that last Thursday night reviewed the action strategy section and budgets that they have to do for the five-year requirement for the DNR approved plan. They're not attached in here, but I, I just wanted to give you an idea of where they're going. So I wanted to provide you a copy of the, of the parks plan. And, I don't know, Marcy, you, you and Steve have been working on this for a long time, and you guys have-
I guess there's lots going on with the parks plan. We are working with Beckett Raider to develop plans for, are we calling them north and south then? Like, the old bayside park, but then also from Bunker Hill all the way down to the end of the Mountain Jacks property. So we'll have a full plan that will connect all of those parks with a trail system, except for, of course, the parcels that we do not have easements to at this time, but we'd like to plan so for future use, we can look at that and see where we can go with it. And right now, we have a northside bayside park plan that everybody seems to really like, and at our next meeting on October seventeenth, we'll be looking at the south end bayside park there.
Yeah, some of those are in this, back here.
Yeah, okay, that's what I saw.
Does that include the title?
I don't think those were written on the map.
Yeah, well, I didn't look at them real close, I just noticed that they were here.
Yeah, those are the ones from the placemat, I think. That's when I asked if he was going to put in the right map.
So is the only place we don't have the easement, is that the vet?
The vet clinic, and there's like four residential houses and then that condo.
Condo, one condo has given it to us, the building.
The one that has the thing?
The big problem, they're working on the retaining wall, yeah. They have it written for you. They don't have it written, yeah, yeah.
So basically, what we're planning in the parks is we're going to have a, it's about a half-mile walking trail through the wooded area and then through the open area. There will be a large pavilion, and there will be a play area that has half of it being a natural playscape with just like open space and rocks and logs separated by, we're opening up, if we can, an Artesian well that will connect into the bay and empty, and that will be a separation through the play area. So there will be a traditional play structure on one side, and then the natural-based play structure on the other side, surrounded by like retaining wall that people will be able to sit on to watch the children. And then we have a pavilion in the center with seated areas around it, and another retaining wall area that will lead down to the beach with wide steps that people can sit on, and you can sit on the wall also. It's a pretty minimalist plan, as we want it to be pretty natural and be something that the township can maintain.
Sounds beautiful.
Yeah, if we have a lot of things like splashwater and that stuff, we get into high maintenance costs. We're looking at adding, I think it's an extra fifty parking spaces. Yeah, so that, yeah, and the summer-
We'll be phased too, this, the bay shore part north.
Right.
And we'll phase that in, and do part of it now, and later on, when the funding gets in, we can do the rest of it phased too. And then, right now, we're looking at bayside park south.
Right.
So thank you for all your work. That sounds really, I'm looking forward to that, taking my grandson here.
We have, if you'd like to see it, I think we have the world of it planned here. Nikki, I wonder if that would be something, Nikki's trying to get it to her. Like that, part of that plan. I know, I think it's, it was a month. I know, last time we talked to Chris, he was like, "Oh, my God, this..." That's funny, because I was just looking at it the other day. So this is our trail system and they have moved the bathrooms. This will be our groomed beach area and this is what we have to do natural. And then you can see the artesian well that opens up with the play areas on either side. And the seating will go around here and then these steps for seating and then all the way around here, that retaining wall. And all the blue areas, that's just water retention, so we'll have like rain gardens and things of that nature.
Stormwater and, and stormwater control and water quality is more important, so we're rather looking at what we're going to do and maybe impart some, uh, impervious, impervious, uh, parking also.
Awesome.
Does anybody want to look closer at it?
That's awesome. That's really exciting.
That's it.
Great job.
That's our agenda for today. I'm going to open it, does anybody have any comment about the parks draft plan?
Well, I can just ask, Marcy, what'd you guys decide, I haven't talked to Christie, have you done? Schedule for the parks plan, you guys got any of that?
The schedule for the parks plan is she will have the south end parks plan at our October seventeenth meeting. And then after that, hopefully, we will agree to pass it, but we'd probably give us over the weekend if we wanted to change anything and put the public notice on the paper that following Monday, if not sooner. And then we would have to schedule another one in November after thirty days before the board meeting, so we can get into the December.
So the planning commission would have access to the draft?
Yes. In fact, that's online, she just sent me, um, an email earlier today after Caitlin did. So I have the new plan, that's why I thought maybe this one was, uh... But that would have been pretty cool, because I think she said it about four o'clock. But if anybody would like the link, I would happily just blow it that out to all of you and you can look at what we have.
We can have, Nikki just sent that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Send that out, so we all have it.
Does that, now that goes to the board for approval? Okay.
It's, it's on the Acme Future, I just looked it up, the, the new park plan is already on the...
Okay.
AcmeFuture.org website.
Um, as a sidebar, do we know when the township website is going to be launched?
Jay just finished, uh, sending all the links and information that we presently have to them, they've been working at it for several weeks.
Okay.
But I do not have the date yet. So it'll be complete, but it is in the works.
Okay. All right, uh, if anybody else has comments, I'll open it up for public comment right now at eight fourteen. I'm just going to close that, right? Yeah, okay, um... I think we would just, yeah, 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 that's made a motion, do I have a support?
I'll support.
All right, all on paper? Do we need to actually vote on the chairman? I don't know, I don't know what else we do.
You know, technically you don't have to, the chair can just say the meetings and jury, but a lot of, a lot of places.
I'm going to a reference rule, I will get better.